This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Board Department of Commissions is being held remotely on Zoom. It's streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of overhearing a public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Commissioner Pacino will be the Board Secretary. Please ask all Board of Commissioners and public participants to identify themselves, please. I'm Bob Coulter, the Chair.
Phil Pacino, the Vice Chair and the Secretary.
John Stempak, Commissioner.
Dave Talbot, Commissioner.
Marlene Abita, Commissioner.
And I see Mike.
Yep, Mike Monahan, resident Bancroft Ave. in Reading, Massachusetts.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to enter into our agenda. We're going to open up with public comment. So please stop. Let's start with James, please. Citizens Advisory Board.
At this time, we have no comment.
All right. Next step would be to lean onto the RMLD Board. And then, uh, public comment. Mike?
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Sure. Uh, Mike Monahan, Bancroft. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name's Mike.
Yes, we can, Mike.
My name's Mike Monahan. I live on Bancroft Ave. in Reading, Massachusetts. Uh, thanks for the opportunity for me to speak. I've never spoken to this Board before, so I just ask for your patience if I deviate from standard protocols. I have two very brief items I want to talk about. The first one is, um, I've been hearing rumors around town that, um, the rate may be increased and, um, for Green Initiative, and there was some confusion I had whether it was going to be an opt-in or an opt-out rate increase, if it's an optional increase. I tried figuring out what the Board, what direction the Board was going in, but, um, there's no minutes of publish since February. And I couldn't review YouTube videos for many hours, so I, I just wanted to voice my, my opinion, and I, I strongly oppose to an opt-out feature for, um, that, and I would encourage the Board to please make it opt-in. And I, can I get a response to that? I don't even know if it's been decided yet because I, I didn't see any minutes since February. Maybe my point is moved. I don't know.
It's moved at this point, Mike. We're still, we're still under discussion, so.
Okay.
There is no decision at this point.
Okay, so, all right, so I voiced my opinion on the, the second and last item I wanted to talk about is, I noticed you don't have any minutes published since February, and I noticed from your agenda tonight, you're going to be discussing, hopefully proving some minutes from March, April. I would encourage you to more timely publish minutes. I read the open meeting law, and you know, I don't think the spirit of it is to be six months behind. Um, I could be wrong, generally speaking. The reason I'm asking for that is the town of Reading is already the victim of serial open meeting law complaints being filed by a person or persons in town. It's costing me as a taxpayer, it's costing us as a taxpayer, a lot of money in legal fees, and it seems like an easy situation to prevent before it happens. So I would, I would encourage you to get your minutes filed more timely. I think, um, to avoid legal costs A and B, um, as a citizen. I shouldn't have to have no minutes to review since February 24th. It's just, it doesn't seem right to me. So, um, thanks for listening to me and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mike. Good comments. Yeah, it's good feedback, so thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Speaking of minutes, uh, action item.
No, Mr. Chair. I got something to apologize.
Yes, please.
Um, I just want to mention the
Yes, yes, Phil.
United Nations Climate Change Report that came out this week. I would recommend that everybody, uh, get a copy, download a copy and read it and some of the, you know, that, what's going to happen in terms of global warming and effect on oceans and droughts and, you know, I really recommend everybody, I just want to kind of highlight and basically let everybody know that this is something out there and that, you know, it's, it's some pages and a lot of scientific stuff, but it's got some very interesting conclusions as to what the future is going to look like. So I would recommend everybody, you know, go out and read it and, you know, and get the idea really what climate change, what's happening with climate change. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, uh, anybody else? Okay. Item number three. Uh, approval of the minutes from March 18th and April 22nd, 2021. Phil, if you could, please.
Okay. Couple of comments, Mr. Chair, first. I try to get these minutes as fast as I can get to them as the Secretary, so, you know, I appreciate the, the public input on that, but, you know, the minutes have rather lengthened. Uh, we do have software, and basically, one of the, one of the problems I'm having with the software is the fact we have a lot of "we's" that are in there, as opposed specifically referring to whether it's the Department or whether it's the Commission. We have a lot of "we's" in there. Then also there's things like, my favorite is, um, on one of the items, it's, you know, Mr. Coulter was asking about the SIC, the SIC policy. It actually came out, he was asking about the SOC policy, S-O-C-K. So I found that rather interesting, um, in terms of that. So it does take time to go through these. Um, you know, I appreciate the comments, but it does take time to go through these minutes and, and get them, get them in, in place. With the software, we're getting, the minutes are way long at this point, so I'll do the best I can as a Secretary. Okay, and with that, I will move that the Board of Commissioners approve the meeting minutes of April 18th, 2021, and, and, excuse me, back up. March 18th, 2021, and April 22nd, 2021, meeting on the recommendation, General Manager.
Second. Peter, vote.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Mr. Coulter, aye. Excellent. Okay. Moving on to item number four, the annual report confirmation. Action item was Colleen. Phil, if you could.
You want the motion first, Mr. Chair?
Oh, Colleen, would you like to speak first or would you like the motion?
Well, we have some comments that Erica would have just sent you, um, because we are trying to follow the open meeting law. So because comments came in from Commissioner Talbot, Greg and I have been working with him going back and forth for the last few days, and we feel like we've captured the comments. We also sent you the full annual report, which you looked at at the last meeting, but I'll let Greg go through exactly what the changes are to reflect what the comments were. And then I guess we can deliberate as to whether or not that meets the intent of, of what the Board would like to reflect on our procurement of power.
So good evening all. There are two text pages and then there are three chart pages. And so the text pages are basically, this is just highlighted to make sure that they synchronize with the, uh, the actual data and the charts themselves. So this is pretty straightforward. These are those, those highlighted changes, just numbers, and they just were made sure they all tied together. So Erica, yeah, so, so, yep, those are the two. So Erica, if you go up or down, go to the first chart. So actually go to the, um, so we'll start with this chart. So there's three, we had two charts in there before. Based on, uh, on discussion and feedback, what we created was this particular slide, and this has the same data as the chart that you saw last month, and you'll see as slide or as page number 18, don't go to that yet. But it basically distinguishes between, um, from a power supply perspective, the, uh, power supply that had certificates that were retired, um, in 2020. And then those are both hydro as well as nuclear certificates that were retired either directly by us or by MWC on our behalf in 2020. Um, and so that worked out to be, as we got, as we clarified everything, that worked out to be, um, 22%. The target from the climate bill would have been 20%. If you look at the, the purple shaded or the purple shaded piece, those are all certificates that were sold. And so, um, as you can see on the last line of that definition, sold certificates do not count toward any compliance bill compliance. So I'll come back to this in just a second. If you go to page 18, Erica. So this, this was an updated version of what we had shown you last, uh, last month. And the suggestion, which was a good one, um, was to still have our, um, sources indicated, which are the combination of the colored, whether it's solid or shaded. And what we ended up doing, the recommendation was, which made sense, was to take the retired one and leaves those as solid colors, and then the certificates that were sold make those hashed or shaded. And so you, you have a little better sense here of what we ended up doing from a, from a transaction perspective. We also thought it was important to indicate the transaction by source. Um, so this is a 2020 snapshot. It's the same data as the previous. Uh, the only difference is that it indicates the mix of the certificates that we ended up selling to give the general public an idea of what, uh, of what we ended up doing from transactions on the certificate sales side. That's for 2020. Obviously, as you look at this chart, uh, we have, this is an outlook through 2030. So we have a, based on our portfolio and our policy 30 Rev. 1, which we approved earlier this year, the, uh, that annualized line, that solid green line, it's the same one we've had in there consistently, but it basically takes us from 2020, the requirement from the climate bill of 20% to by 2030, 50% of the portfolio, um, needs to have certificates that are retired. And that's what that annualized, annualized line is, and it increases by 3% per year. So, um, the next, um, go to slide 19. Or not slide, but page 19, sorry. So this basically is the same data. It ties into, it's a table, tabular version of what's in the previous two charts. The main cleanup here was not really the data, but just the names. So instead of saying renewable, et cetera, we basically did it by, uh, uh, by source. So if you go back to page 18, so all of this basically is the transaction by source, and then page 17. This is what we actually have reported or will report at the end of, uh, of each year, 2021 through 2030. So that's, that's the snapshot of the changes we made. The rest of the text in the annual report, uh, remain the same unchanged. Questions or discussions?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Dave.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Greg and Colleen. We had a, a good call a couple of days ago about this. And if you could just go, and, and the backing up before that, a couple of days before that, they had sent this slide with some different words to me and John Stempak for, you know, uh, some feedback. I don't know what, if anything, John sent back, but then I had some feedback and then we had a conversation. Uh, real quick, just the previous page, please, the, no, sorry, the first of the graphics, that one. So this is what I, yeah, that one. So this is, this is our power supply net of REX, and my proposal, and this is what they created based on what I suggested, and I think this is the accurate statement of what our power supply actually is, net of REX sales. And it's not, not just by climate bill compliance, it's by what REX mean and what REX sales mean. So I think this is the slide that, where this is the page that really is, is the page. The next one, if you could just, you know, go to the next one real quick. And I appreciate the, the efforts to crosshatch. Somebody else had suggested the crosshatching. To me, I, you know, I appreciate the efforts. I think that it's still a little misleading because I don't think hydro sold is a source or solar sold is a source or wind sold is a source. You know, by definition, when you sell the REX, you can't say it's wind, solar or hydro anymore. So to me, you know, it, we did make some progress and I'm really grateful for that and your time. You know, I think if this is the final version, you know, I'll probably be abstaining from, from the vote. The next page also still says that those other sort, other renewables are sources when we sold the REX. So we sold the solar and wind REX, then I don't think those are sources, uh, anymore. So that's my, others may disagree, that's my take. If I had some other opinion that I would feel better about it, but I think I'll abstain based on this. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Any further comments? Okay. Phil, if you could read the motion, please.
Oh, Bob, sorry. Is it too late?
For sure. No, 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 Marlene, no.
Just so I'm clear, um, two Commissioners received this this week and not all five of us. I would just need more time to read it, um, than tonight. Is that correct, though? That?
Well, I, I think at this point, we it, it's, it's a, this is a rework of information that was there per request of date, which it's going through its iteration. So it's just, it's a change of the graphic to represent our power in a different manner. And it, it's a little bit more finite. I'd like to vote tonight, uh, if, if that's your, your choice, Marlene, if you would like to abstain, because I think this is the second time we've gone over this. I, I think delaying it is, is, we're just going to keep tweaking and tweaking, it's just going to go on. I'd like, I'd like to push it to a vote tonight, so.
I understand. I just, okay. I understand that it didn't go, I didn't miss an email.
No, no, I, I think it, I think, um, the effort was, um, trying not to have a discussion on email. Uh, in abiding by the open meeting law, sometimes it's very difficult where you could collaborate on a, on a slide on the, on the back, but, uh, together, but I think that's why it was very, and I don't want to speak for you, Dave, but I think that was, and John, but I think that was your effort.
Yes, that was certainly my effort. I mean, I had, uh, really no issue with the previous slides, which is why I didn't respond. I do think that, um, in the future, we should certainly send it to everybody, all the Commissioners. Uh, I think it's, it's totally appropriate to, to do that, just to be able to get their input as well. And, uh, but I, otherwise I have no, no issue with what has been presented here.
Yeah, and I think to John's point, it, it should, probably should have gone to all five. It, it, the issue would come as if one Commissioner was to reply back to a quorum or if one Commissioner sent to staff and staff sent to a quorum before the meeting. That's when the open meeting law issue is, not, not staff soliciting opinion from all five. If, if each of the five responds back to staff. But anyway, I don't want to keep.
Yeah, we don't need to talk about that, right?
No, yeah, we're good.
Standpoint, standpoint. Okay, so Phil, if we could.
Yeah, very good. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve the annual report for calendar year 2020 as presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Second. Okay. Let's take a vote.
Marlene, abstain.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Uh, Talbot abstain.
Mr. Coulter, aye. Okay. So three ayes, two abstains. That's, it passes, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, if we could move on to item number five on the agenda.
Yeah, Bob, I'm going to start if you don't mind.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, staff has worked really hard to package this. There's a number of different issues that we have to get through that have to do with rates, the new, after doing, finishing the class cost of service study, the energy efficiency charge, we're coming up with a new A3 rate that I've, I've, uh, talked about with you in the past. Renewable choice, all the rate classes. And we're going to present this so that it's going to happen over the next three months, okay? Over the next three meetings. Some of the areas that we have to be mindful of are, if we have a vote that has to do with a rate, the cab, even though there's a motion on the agenda for them, they do have 30 days. So I talked to Jason before the meeting. It's not to pressure anybody, it's just, it's there. And if we want to try to get some of these done, we have a lot to do over the next three months. And why is that important? Because the 20-year agreement says that, uh, we have to get the budget done, uh, and give certain amounts of time. So the budget has to go out the end of September, right? So we're going to be spending time going over the budgets, and we all know that the rates dovetail into the financials for the budget. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg. So we're going to try to present it tonight and, and take each part so that you have plenty of time to think about it. But when we get to the other end, we've still got to get the budget done. And the cab still has, uh, their 30 days. So if we're mindful of that, then I'll ask Greg to start going through each one of these. Um, and I think it'll be, uh, just like all of our presentations, very educational, and I think, um, it'll, um, it'll lead for, for movement forward. All right, thanks.
All right, I want to share screen here. Great. You guys should see the, uh, head slide?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. All right, perfect. So you guys have a copy of this obviously already, but, uh, we're going to talk briefly. The, the first two items there, the class cost of service, um, there's, I'll walk through that very briefly and then give you some additional context, which really sets the stage. As, as Colleen mentioned, we're going to try and bring you an update on the solar incentive and what our plans are with that. And then move into the, uh, efficiency and electrification charge, um, which will require motions, a new A3 rate, which will require motion and approval, and then the discussion on the renewable rate. And then, um, the Commissioner Bittah, um, had put together some other materials, which we will bring up as we get to the last topic, that renewable choice piece. So that's, we're going to try and cover. Um, again, this is part of a bigger discussion. The class cost of service, um, at the end of the day, all right, at the, at the bottom line, at this point in time, the actual class cost of service study is complete. There was significant analysis associated with that, a lot of analysis, uh, done by PLM there, the group that did the work back, uh, the last time in 2017. There's a lot and lot of material here, and it is, it is data intensive. You, you probably got a sense from these slides that the rate discussion is data intensive by itself. So I'm going to try and give you the highlights. At the end of the day, um, the current rates are within normal range. But as we look at, at the context that we'd mentioned to you before, the peak shift, the drive toward electrification, the transition from, um, flat to negative growth to, uh, to positive growth, those are all, uh, have prompted us to, uh, to look very carefully in terms of the rates that we'll put in place going forward. Um, there are several actions that we can actually take care of tonight, which I outlined just a few moments ago. Uh, but, and obviously, the results of the class cost of service study is incorporated into the recommendations that we have. Um, just, we had talked before, this is just a quick background. The goals behind the, the rates, they're on the left-hand side here, the key pieces are in bold text. But all the work that we do is to design rates to cover the cost of providing service, right? Pretty straightforward. Um, there's a continual intention to allocate the cost fairly across the various rate classes, and that's where a lot of the analysis comes in. Um, as we've talked about in the past and has been in place since, uh, actually 2008, is to provide funds for efficiency and electrification incentives. The other piece that you guys noticed that came out of the customer survey was to give the customer, A, better understanding, but B, begin to give them more control of their energy use. And this is going to take time, but this is the direction that we're going. And then, of course, um, we have to comply with both, uh, uh, DPU, um, and RMLD policies and any, any other statutory requirements. So there's always a compliance piece that we have to deal with. So that's how we think about the, the big picture goals when we look at rates. There's a process that we go through, that's that middle box. I'm going to walk through each, I won't walk through each individual item. You guys have a sense of the process. We tend to take a three-year horizon when we look at rates. It's important that as we look at rates, we clarify each time what the objectives are and desired behaviors. I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. Um, and obviously, at the very end of it, there probably should be a bullet point that says we, we propose the final, um, rates themselves. The desired outcomes, um, the main thread, uh, in the, in this new context, one is electrification. The second thing is generation and load management. Electrification is pretty straightforward, I'll talk about that in just a second. And then the customer control, we talked about just a few moments ago. In the case of electrification, that second bullet, we're going to continue to, uh, uh, design programs that'll afford and motivate heat pump installations within our territory, both in the commercial, which has been where the main focus has been, and also on commercial as well. Um, we'll talk a little bit later on, but there is a, a program that's been in place called custom incentives that really fits into the larger scale, commercial and the larger scale industrial. So really, when I think about electrification and our incentives, they are intended and targeted toward, um, all rate classes. Um, that encouraged EV adoption is, is something relatively new. You recall that, uh, we had an EV workshop, um, back in April. We actually have an EV, electric vehicle, uh, car show as part of the Wilmington Farmers Market this Sunday. Please come by. Um, I think there'll be about 20 different electric vehicles, um, different types, et cetera. Um, but when we, we look at this, uh, adoption, um, what we've, we have already in place, the incentives for chargers, and what you're going to see, we're trying to do with that A3 rate is to provide additional incentive for, um, our rate base to, uh, to consider, um, an EV purchase as they look at buying new vehicles on the schedule that they do on a regular basis. So that electrification is a real key thread in today's context, and you read about that in the news. And, um, Commissioner Pacino had mentioned, uh, that's, that's a topic not only, uh, in our rate territory and the state level, national level, but on an international level as well. The generation boxes is very important. We want to, where we can, increase generation within our territory. Part of the reasons for doing that is to, as we generate within our territory, those kilowatt hours are not subject to capacity and transmission costs, which as you remember from our earlier discussions in the previous slide, is about 40% of the cost. So to the extent that we can generate within territory, that's good. The reality is solar is really the main, uh, generation source that is, is at our fingertips right now. Um, so where you'll see on our program, some motivations to increase that. Pardon me, just for a second, I'm going to close my door while the vacuum goes by. Sorry about that. Um, so generation is a critical piece. The other piece on the low, you'll see in the second and third bullets there. We, today, you probably all, we talked about it as we were coming on, but, uh, hour ending 18, so between five and six was a peak. It's probably going to be the monthly peak, um, for this month, August. It, uh, it is highly unlikely, given the, the results from the ISO New England site, that it'll be the annual peak. But nevertheless, um, what we try and do, as we talked about before, uh, the Chairman is, is keeping his air conditioner off, he's trying to support the peak. But anyways, that whole thread and that whole thought is to prop load shifts away from the afternoon peak hours, which is a little bit broader, but typically between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, um, and particularly the summer peaks, because that's where the capacity comes in. The other thing that you want to see in our A3 rate structure is to encourage EV charging overnight, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail. But we basically have open capacity in our network to, uh, to provide additional KWH, additional kilowatt hours in the, in the middle of the night. And so we'll talk about how we design the rate structure to encourage that. That last part of this slide is about customer control and customer awareness. And one of the things that, that, uh, as RMLD, we're doing, uh, between the IRD and the Finance Group is we're going to look at how to make the billing easier and simpler for our customers. You could still have the detail, that those that are interested in the detail. But the second piece at the very bottom there is to equip the customers to, uh, to affect To uh to affect or to make choices relative to their energy costs. So we're just beginning this. Um, and there's a lot behind this. Uh, it was one of the the requests in the customer survey, and it's what we want to do as well. So. Customer portals, um, customer apps, all sorts of stuff like that, you're gonna start seeing, but that just. In terms of us thinking about rates, we're trying to provide places for customers to make choices. Alright. Um. The load forecast, just to put things in a little bit of perspective, of that chart to the right we saw before, just to give the relative, that spider chart. Um, uh, is from the last time we got together, uh, that's historical, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Um, and then the table here, uh, just to highlight a queue item, a few items here, again, just to emphasize to you the data intensity. Of the rate structure and the rate analysis and the rate recommendations that we do. But all of it starts with a load forecast. So this, this, this is a simplified snapshot of what the load looks like. And as we talked about before, um, you know, we're looking at an increase where before we were basically flat as we go twenty two to twenty twenty five. Um, you can get an idea on that bottom percent change of the of the increase. This is probably on the conservative side, but again. From a budgeting and rate perspective, we want to be on the conservative side. If it gets, if it ends up being higher, then that's great, but we want to be careful. Um, obviously, we talked about before residential, commercial and industrial, those are the three largest rate classes. We do pay very close attention to the other four categories, the other four rates, school. Municipal streetlights and private area streetlights. Um, the co-op is is a small part of the business. That basically is given some of the periphery where we share. Uh, billing and and supply responsibilities with our our neighboring MLPs. Um, but the the school and the municipal streetlights and the private streetlights, all of them, we pay close attention to. The one takeaway from here, as we think about it, without getting too deep into the numbers. Obviously, the residential is larger, um, it produces higher revenues. It's also growing faster, it covers more geography, that more geography is very important. And near term, um, as we as we present in the next two months, the actual rates. You're going to see, you're gonna understand um what the numbers look like, because. Um, this data here shows that the residential, while it's growing and has a larger geography, it's gonna require a larger percentage. Of the uh the network investment going forward in time. That's not to say that the Wilmington um substation, uh, that's a requirement to support the uh the CNIs and in the upper part of our area. That's a given. Uh, now we're looking beyond that in terms of what goes forward. So just to keep that context in mind. This is just to, again, to kind of put a little bit of context and set the stage. Um, for discussion, for the motions for tonight, but also for the next two meetings. Um, I don't expect you guys to memorize the numbers. Uh, what I what I really want to draw your attention to. Is that box in the center, which is the average rate, this is dollars per kilowatt hour. And this, these are, these are averages um across all of these rate classes. So it's the total revenue divided by the total load. And you know, there's all customers fit in different areas, but that gives you a relative size. Where the residential is is um, it averages about fifteen cents a kilowatt hour. Um, and on the lower end of the range, we have the industrial, um, including their time of use, which averages just to just below eleven cents a kilowatt hour. And then the commercials in between there. Um, I I give you that context because it's gonna set the stage for discussions going forward. In terms of how we look at what we charge, and from the previous slide, the investment required to support these different customer classes. Um. There is, uh, so so now to kind of move into the the action plans for this evening. Um, there's a solar incentive, uh, it's actually available to all rate classes, but just given the way our incentive structures are configured. Um, it's primarily the people that that take advantage of it are the residential and the smaller CNI. Um, as I mentioned before, that first bullet, our intention is to continue to promote. The installation of uh generation and obviously non-carbon generation um in our territory. And so solar is one of the mechanisms. Um. The annual installations from our residential, or our our. You know, residential and small CNI program, it's averaging about thirty installations per year, and the average installation is about eight point five. Kilowatts per installation. Um, it's important to give you a little bit of context. For the past almost two years, um, the Massachusetts DOE R has had a matching grant. To the tune of six hundred dollars per kilowatt. And that was, that was matched against our um existing incentive. Also of six hundred dollars per kilowatt. Um, KW, um, those funds were actually are supposed to end at the end of last year, uh, end of twenty twenty. But they continued on through uh roughly into the June period of this year, twenty twenty one, but those funds are all gone. Um, and what we would like to do, uh, what we're planning to do is to continue the existing program. Um, before I get down to the action plan here. That would basically mean that our incentive would be paying twelve hundred dollars per kilowatt. Of a system installed. On an incremental basis to our budget, and we'll talk about the budget here in the next slide, but that's about an incremental hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At the rate of about thirty installations per year. That investment from an RMLD rate payer perspective. Um, by adding those and gaining all the benefits associated with them, which goes back up to the top bullet. That payback period is around six years. So that twelve hundred dollar investment, twelve hundred dollar per kilowatt investment for a typical system. Basically has a six year payback on a twenty five year system. Um, there are limits, of course, the limits. The uh, the incentives expire, or the incentives only applied to uh units that are twenty KW or smaller. And I remember I said that there are larger ones, we have a separate program for the larger units. And it also has a limit of fifty percent of project cost. So just to kind of give you a big picture of where this is. So what our plan, our action plan, for all the reasons just mentioned, the the benefit to the rate payers and the benefit of putting generation within our territory. Is to continue the existing program with no change from the customer viewpoint, which means. That those applications that are already in and those that would come in for the next um next eighteen to twenty four months. It would still be the twelve hundred dollar per KW. Um. So in effect, what we would end up doing by doing this is increasing the incentive from six hundred dollars to KW to twelve hundred dollars per KW. Basically, we'd be replacing with RMLD funds, the DOE R match. Our intention is to make it effective immediately. And the idea behind that is that um the DOE R MLP program, as it was called. Was fairly lengthy, so there are many applications that are uh that are that are in the queue. Um, and some that were ready for approval. At the same time, the funds ran out. Um. So our intention basically would be to keep this in place and then reevaluate this um in early twenty twenty three. The other related piece, you guys have heard consistently about the importance of batteries for storage tied to solar systems. And we are supportive of that. We think it's great. Obviously, you know that we have a battery in our in our system. Um, by itself, a standalone battery. Um, we're looking at the economics and we're basically planning in early twenty twenty to reevaluate adding storage. Um, either in addition to or 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 tied to this incentive, but that's gonna be a twenty twenty two event. So our plan right now. Effective immediately is to put the solar incentive in place. Um, that would keep it from a customer perspective at twelve hundred dollars per KW. Now, I'm gonna put that in the context of the. The bigger budget, right? Which is the efficiency and electrification charge. Which is formerly known, and we'll talk about this transition in just a moment as the ECC. So this table in the upper left hand corner is basically the combined budget, and it includes the previous slide. It includes the assumption that we'd have that solar incentive. Um. At that twelve hundred dollars per KW rate. And what has happened between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Um, last year, we actually repackaged the um heat pump program, the air source heat pump for HVAC applications. And um, we we had a little bit of stumbling getting that, there were so many applications that came in um last fall and over the winter. Um, we had to adjust our internal processes to be handling that volume. Um, but that volume is is continuing, it's a very successful program. Um, it 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 supports the electrification goal from RMLD's perspective, as well as from a state perspective. And so you'll see in the residential incentives, the majority that that residential line below the uh in the middle of that box there. Um, you can see my mouse actually, can't you? Um, the majority of that um is is air source heat pump. In fact. In twenty twenty two, that twenty twenty two forecast. Um, about forty percent of the total dollars of two point five million are air source heat pump specific. The other big piece are are solar related. Um, and then custom on the commercial side as well. It, as you recall, um, since twenty thirteen, we have been collecting one tenth. Um, of one cent per KWH, per kilowatt hour sold. Um, which has been in place. Well, since twenty thirteen. And up until. Last year and this year, that was more than adequate to support the incentives that were paid out to our residences, to our our customers. But given the growth of the heat pump and the commercial lighting and the solar piece. Um, you're gonna see, if you look at it from twenty twenty one, and this is year to date actuals through June. And then the forecast for the balance of the year, second, uh, third and fourth quarter, we're gonna be just under two million dollars. And if you look at uh the EEC collected. Um, at the rate we are, we're gonna be just under six hundred and sixty thousand dollars collected. So we're gonna end up. With a deficit of about one point three million dollars. Um. What we're we're looking at for, what you'll see for twenty twenty two is we're gonna continue the programs as they are. We we continue to make adjustments to each one of them. But um, we're we're confident that the air force heat pump is a good program. Just to put things in perspective, in twenty twenty, it was just under twenty systems were were processed. Um, in twenty twenty one, we forecasted a little bit over two hundred. And already halfway, a little more than halfway through the year, we have a hundred and fifty applications in. Um, for perspective, there are about thirteen hundred. Uh, heating systems installed in our territory each year. And our goal is to um. Look at it, so there's, our goal is to encourage and support, but also uh the the law, the climate bill will will mandate this. Um, but to to basically support the adoption of air source heat pumps in lieu of oil and in lieu of uh natural gas and in lieu of propane systems. Um, so that's the, that's the biggest piece of that residential incentives. So that's kind of the context behind where we are. Um, that there's three lines across the bottom. Um, difference, transfer and cumulative difference. And so as you noticed, coming out of twenty twenty, um, we were short just a little over three hundred thousand, that's gonna grow in twenty twenty one. Um. The real message here is twofold, one, and we'll we'll uh I'll bring this recommendation in just a second, but that recommendation, A. Is to transfer two and a half million from the unrestricted operating fund into the energy conservation reserve. That will basically make us positive for the year. Related to that is that item C is we are going to. Recommend that we increase our um incentive charge from one tenth. Of one cent per kilowatt hour sold to three tenths. It doesn't cover the entire incentive program. But as you can see, even the next three years, we have a plan to still allow us to continue providing the incentives to our customers. Now, the other thing to keep in mind, that rate, that uh three tenths uh of a cent per kilowatt hour. Is uh applied to all rate classes equally. And at the same time, all the rate classes have the ability to um participate in the various incentives as well. So there's. There's balance and fairness between all the rate classes. That's the intention of the design and the way we designed the programs. So that um, that's, I'm gonna pause here just for a moment. Um, that I guess the other, you can, you've probably had a chance to look at the information on the right hand side, two key points. That rate increased from one tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. On a typical residential bill, we increased that bill one dollar and sixty four cents, again, typical. Um, which is about a one point four percent increase um relative to what the rate is right now. The other thing to keep in mind is that most MLPs are right around those. Most MLPs don't break out an EEC or ECC charge. Um, for those that do are right around two tenths. Um, of a cent per kilowatt hour. And then uh the IOUs are a little bit more expensive because they have broader programs. They're at one point seven cents per kilowatt hour, just for reference. Um, so that's a little bit of background. So. What we want to do here, we just want to pause for a moment. Um, uh, make the make the recommendation on the transfer. Um, we're gonna have to, that will be just for the, well, actually, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll let I'll let you drive now for a minute, and then I'll. Uh, take discussion questions, but the first thing we want to do basically is do the transfer motion. Just for the board, and then we'll come back and do the other two with the cab and then the board.
Okay, um. Why don't Phil, uh unless there's any, was there any discussion? On the transfer specifically, the two point five million?
Um, um, Mr. Coulter, uh, I think that's exactly uh the right thing to do. That's uh sort of what the funds are. Meant to accomplish in the first place. Uh, I think over the in. Entire lifetime of the RMLD is to uh fund various programs that that do these types of things. So. I I think it's exactly the right thing to do.
Thank you, John. Any further comments?
Just to brief on Mr. Chair, if I may. Uh, yes, please. Agree with that. Um, I I'm wondering what the wider set of um. You know, kind of appliance and and so forth, rebates are are coming or proposed. And, you know, is there a wider set of these?
Yeah, if I, if I may, there there's a, a, we have an extremely broad set yard uh set of incentives. Um, appliances, yard tools, um, yard tools is actually fairly unique. We actually. Uh, started that, uh, Massey have actually adopted that, looking at our program. So we have a, we have a pretty broad set of incentives. Um, we do panel upgrades. And they're all listed on the website. So we're, we as a as a utility. Um, have a very broad set of incentives to encourage electrification.
I understand, I meant on the efficiency side, and are are we thinking of any changes on the efficiency side? Not that I know what they should be.
Oh.
Uh, you know, but are we? We don't have to get into it tonight, I'm just curious.
No, no, I I think that's an appropriate question. So for example, on air source heat pump, um, period, so each year right now, we basically. We increase the level. Or to uh to uh. Qualify for a rebate, for example. So yes, we continue to increase the. Uh, the efficiency of the individual appliances, and for that matter, and more importantly, the air source heat pumps as example. Yes, we do.
Okay, what is it on air conditioners? What's the SEER that we we require?
Um, I think we're up at, but um, there's a, there's a summer and a winter. Um, and I want to say it's in the high teens on both, but I'd have to pull that up. I don't have to up my hand to be honest, but it's on the website, it's very, it's clearly stated. Um. And notice when you go to the website, we keep track at the bottom of each one of those. What changes were made when? So people have an idea, they can see the increases.
Alright, thank you.
Any further comments?
Um.
Phil, could you please read the motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Did Vivek want to speak? Yeah, no, I I I, yeah, I I just had a question on the incentives. I just want to understand, because there's numbers like, uh, Greg, you said like it was hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Estimated for solar programs, and I presume the rest is air source heat pumps. So is is, are the numbers we're seeing here, are those the lim- the limits at which you will stop? Uh, ju- just just want to understand what those numbers mean.
Yeah, two, uh, uh, good question, Vivek, the two things, um. These, so the hundred and fifty is just the match. So we've been averaging thirty. Um, units installed or thirty rebates paid out on the solar. And we expect that to continue at a fairly level rate. And so um, we were basically contributing roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to that. And for the past two years, and MastOE R was matching. And so the incremental costs, so our total costs. Um, just on the on the the smaller um solar is a little bit over three hundred thousand. Um, the the second question, um, and and as I mentioned before, the air source heat pump is probably forty percent of it. Um, our goal and our intention is to be aggressive in terms of electrification incentives. We continue to look at what we have, make adjustments and look for new ones. Um, but to keep driving the electrification. Our strategy right now um is not to put a cap on any of these, because they're not, they're not going, they've grown a lot. Um, but they're not crazy, at least we don't think they're crazy. There's, they're supporting the electrification. And one thing to keep in mind, particularly on the air source heat pump. Is that an air source heat pump that is paid to an individual, um, whoever applies and is open to everybody. Um, that benefits the individual. that benefits the individual by encouraging them to buy a more energy efficient system. But it also benefits the other rate payers that, all the other rate payers that haven't bought the system from the perspective that that heat pump is going to draw or use more electricity than oil or, or natural gas, obviously. And that additional KWH basically allows for less upward pressure on the rates on a KWH basis. So the key thing to keep in mind, Vivek, is that these programs are not only good from a climate perspective, they're not only good from electrification perspective and carbon perspective, but also each one of these benefits not only the people that use it, but also the rest of the rate payers, which is pretty unique.
Okay. So, so in principle, if you had a lot of people signing up, you may end up putting out more than what you list here.
That, that, that is possible. That, that is possible. And it, and as if that accelerates a little bit more than we planned, obviously, we, we come back and let both the cab and the Board of Commissioners know where we are.
All right. Thank you. But there's no limit. So the main point you said is.
Not right now, and, and on purpose, there's no limit right now. Correct.
Thank you.
If I could please ask a question. If the D O E R returns a rebate, would you, obviously, that would be benefit. And we would just adjust accordingly, making that assumption.
Yes, I, I think I heard you, Chairman, that if the D O R puts a matching fund back in, our intention would be to, to, to keep the total at twelve hundred per KW. So we would, we would drop back down to six or whatever number they came up with, if that happened, yes.
Okay. And then, and, and a follow-up, do we, is the customer forced to sell back to RMLD? Can they go on the wholesale market?
Say that question one more time, just to make sure I heard you. I'm sorry.
Bob, did we lose you?
I, I think he was asking about the sellback and, oh, he's, he's back, sorry. Commissioner, I missed the part of your question.
You're not coming through very well.
Yeah, unfortunate.
There we go.
Are we forcing the customer to sell back to RMLD? Or can they wholesale?
I, I, I think, I think I heard your question. Can they, can they self-supply their home and then whatever is access sell back? Is that the question?
So sell wholesale back to another, another MLP, you know, basically wholesale back onto the market. If you have solar, you don't have, and, and you're in.
Yes, no, in, in the, so in the case of the MLP, any sales that come back are bought only by RMLD. That, not, given our structure, we don't have an open market to, to let the customer sell to other people currently. Still there?
Bob, you're experiencing a lot of audio feedback for some reason.
Yeah, I'm having a tough internet connection right now. I'm not too sure why. Sorry. Apologize for that, everybody.
You're back now. You read the motion?
Motion, Bob, if you're there. Move that the Board of Commissioners vote to approve a transfer of funds from unrestricted operating funds to the Energy Conservation Reserve by September thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, John Steppak.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Steppak, aye.
So Talbot, aye.
Beta, aye.
Bob, still there?
Bob, we're still.
He just, he just popped out. He said he's having a wireless issue.
All right, why don't, why don't I, I'll take over and then if he comes back in, Erica, let, let me know, okay? And I'll get off. We got, I mean, we have four votes. So the motion does pass. So Greg, if you want to move on at this point.
Okay, great.
So Bob comes back in, I will step back out again.
Okay, Commissioner Pacino, so the, so the next motion actually goes first to the CAB, and they can choose to vote tonight, or they can choose to take thirty days to digest. So Jason, the, the second motion before you would be to change the name from the Energy Conservation Charge to the Efficiency Electrification Charge to reflect the, the trend and the new world of electrification. And then on a related note, we would be increasing the rate from a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour for all rate classes, and that would be effective January first of twenty twenty-two. In your packet, there was a, an M D P U rate that we have not submitted. It's a draft right now, but if it's approved, we would submit it in October and make the rate effective January first. And that it would be two oh eight being replaced by two ninety-two. It basically covers the stuff we just talked about.
Does any advisory board members have anything to discuss on this? Or any comments you want to make?
Sorry, just Vivek, now a question for Greg. So these, you, you, you didn't specifically mention what M D P U two ninety-two is, right? So.
So, yeah, so, so basically.
I, I'm just trying to decide what's the process here to try to take a decision today.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the, the process basically is for you, for you as a CAB to, the, the primary, the way the two oh eight was structured and two ninety-two replaces two oh eight's exact same structure. It's fundamentally changing the name. And then the, the other thing that two oh eight had established, rate schedule two oh eight is, and two ninety-two now establishes, is what we basically define the rate based on the cost incurred. And in this particular case, with the transfer of the, of the funds, the rate doesn't have to be as high. If we didn't do the rate transfer, it'd be a half a cent. But we made it three tenths of a cent. And so basically, what you're really doing is just approving a new rate schedule, which is primarily a new name. Makes sense? And it's in that package you guys receive, hopefully. So it's a short two paragraph rate. And what we, we would ask you to do is to consider approving that this evening if you are so inclined as a cab.
So we, we saw the two oh eight, right? I can see the two oh eight. I don't see a two nine two.
So the, the two nine two should be in the back of the package that you received yesterday?
No, no, I see a two nine three, I see a two nine four, I don't see a two nine two.
Vivek, it says, it's the first page.
Okay, okay, okay. So sorry. Okay, it says two nine, two nine two supersede. Got it. Okay. Okay, got it. All right, all right.
It's pretty simple, this one.
Okay, okay. All right, fine. I, I'm sorry, I was reading two eight. It's just like, yeah, all right.
Oh, yeah, that's the format, yeah.
Dennis, do you have any comments or questions? And if not, I guess, I mean, I, I, I'm prepared to vote on this tonight.
I'm prepared to vote, I think.
Go for it.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
All right, I can read the motion here. One sec. All right. So the motion is that move that the Citizens Advisory Board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to replace the current M D P U two zero eight rate with the M D P U two nine two Energy Efficiency Electrification Charge, EEC effective on billing on or after January first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
We'll call vote, Vivek.
Okay, Vivek, sunny eye.
Dennis.
Dennis Kelly, aye.
Jason Small, aye. Motion passes three to zero, zero.
Is Bob back on yet?
Yeah, I feel I'm back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Just for information on the previous motion on the transfer, did you record your voters, yes?
I, I will record my voters, yes.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
Back in your hands.
Thank, thank, yep, thank, thank you, Jason. Okay, Phil, would you like to read the motion?
Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to replace the current Mass D P U two oh eight rate with Mass D P U two ninety-two Efficiency Electrification Charge, EEC effective on, on billings on or after January first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
I added an S on the, on the last sentence where it says billings, as opposed to billing. I assume we're going to more than one billing, I would hope.
You're correct.
Yeah.
So. Here a second?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Beta, aye.
Mr. Coulter, aye. Justice five zero. All right. Moving down. Slide ten.
Yep, I'll, I'll keep rolling forward. Thank you. Sorry about the complication and thank you for the responsiveness and flexibility. Okay, the second is the, the recommendation is a new residential A three time of use rate. This available, it's a residential rate, so it's available to all customers, but its intention is to be EV focused. And remember, early on, what we talked about is encouraging through rates to the extent that this is persuasive to customers looking at and considering electric vehicles from an economic perspective. Obviously, there's an environmental perspective that always sits in place. But the intention would be to offer a more substantial, what we call fuel savings in the form of electricity. Obviously, as we talked about before, we will continue as the RMLD staff and team to drive more customer education and more awareness. And I mentioned some of the things that are happening this weekend and, and going forward. We'll probably do our next EV event in January, and we're going to probably do our next heat pump event in November. We'll give you those dates a little bit later. So the, the intention behind this is to encourage adoption. Typically, an EV for our, our customer, again, typical averages, everybody's a little bit different in terms of the driving patterns. But a customer will add around three hundred and eighty KWH per month. Just to put things in perspective, the typical or the average RMLD residential customer is eight hundred and twenty KWH per month. So this is not quite a fifty percent increase in terms of KWH use. So it's not a trivial matter for them. A typical charge adds about thirty percent of capacity. People tend not to let their, again, it's still new, people are still, not as many out there, people are still learning. But typically, people will add about thirty percent capacity during a typical charge. And that typical charge is roughly, roughly about three hours, all right? The reason why that data is important, if you look at that chart in the lower left-hand corner, this chart is actual twenty nineteen data. It is a sampling of five hundred of our residential customers. Remember, we have about twenty-six thousand. And it basically looks at their load profile by month. And so on the left-hand side is KWH. And across the bottom, this is that colored chart across the bottom, maybe you guys can see my mouse. But as you, as you take a look across the bottom, this is basically from midnight. The middle of the chart is noon, and then the far right-hand side is midnight. So this is basically a twenty-four hour load curve for a typical residential customer by month. And you can see this, this dark, this dark blue one here is the, is the July one, right? And then, and you'll notice in the shoulder months, they're a little bit lower. You can see the words charge here. And our intention is our network is configured, the work that the E and O team does, Ameed and John, their team, is to have our, our network be able to handle the maximum peak load at any individual hour. And if you look at the middle of the night, whether it's summer or winter or spring or fall, we have open capacity. And so what we're trying to do with this rate structure is encourage charging during that open capacity. And that fits, and this again for residential, that fits the typical charging profile for, again, typical EV owners or new EV owners. What we're also trying to do, as you notice from today, right, today was a peak day. We want to discourage charging during peak hours because EVs are, are fairly significant in terms of the, the demand, the load. Again, that three eighty out of the eight twenty that I mentioned earlier. So what we have structured, and we're trying to balance the goal to have, to provide additional incentive to charge at night and not, and to discourage charging in the afternoon. We basically developed three eight-hour periods. So the three eight-hour periods are in that table right in the middle. So there's ten PM till six AM, and we want to offer a highly discounted rate during those hours where our, our fixed costs are fixed, and if we can add incremental volume or incremental KWH during those hours, we want to do that. This eight cents, what we'll end up proposing, and it'll, it'll vary depending upon fuel charges and seasonal, et cetera. But typically, or the, the, the average is going to be roughly comparative to rates today, it's going to be eight cents. And then the shoulder, which is basically the morning, six AM till, till two PM, a moderate discount. Again, this is relative to the average fifteen cents that is in place right now, and I'll talk about A two in just a second. That would be twelve cents. And then to discourage, but not to prevent, but to discourage charging between two and ten PM is the twenty-four cents. So that's higher than the fifty. The other thing to keep in, so, so that's the thought process behind this. We do have an A two rate right now. The A two rate has a peak between noon and seven, and then regular hours, anything, anything around that. And there's, it's about twenty cents a kilowatt hour during that, the twelve to seven. And then it's roughly somewhere between roughly around eleven cents a kilowatt hour in the off hours. So we're basically, what we're doing with this, we're not going to take away the A two rate yet. Well, we're not going to take away right now. But we're really trying to have this A three rate be a lower rate to encourage that overnight charging. And so that's why we created these three tiers. So we can, we can have a little more discussions in a few minutes, but I think you guys have the highlights of what we're trying to do here. So the recommendation that we're asking for is to add a new residential A three time of use rate. And oh, by the way, even if you don't have an electric vehicle and you want to jump onto this rate, you can. But you want to look at your load profile, it, it will probably be more expensive because most of your load that's not EV related is in the early evening, which would be the peak time. So you can, but it's probably not, not many people would do that unless their profile's a little bit different. This A three rate would have three tiers, as we just talked about. We'd make it effective January twenty twenty-two. If we can do anything earlier than that, we would, we would do that, but we just want to make sure we got all the mechanics lined up between the billing and, and the communications, et cetera. And obviously, on an ongoing basis with this included, because we're trying to drive a different behavior, we're trying to drive adoption of more EVs, we're going to increase the communication to our rate payers, as we mentioned before. So that's, that is the, the recommendation for a new A three residential rate with the intention to encourage faster EV adoption. I'll pause here for the motions. And again, for any questions, but the sequence will be just like we did a moment ago, which would be first the CAB, and the CAB has the right to defer if they'd like to, or they can choose to, to vote tonight. And then depend upon what they do, then we bring it to the Board of Commissioners as a recommendation. So I'll pause for a moment.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, please, John.
Greg, it's really interesting. The, the question I have is really centered around the, the mechanism of almost take, allowing people to charge their EVs without having to think about it, you know, at these, at this new rate. And so is there a, I, I know we have a program to help people install the chargers in their, in their garages or where, wherever. But is there a timer associated with that as well, so that they could just go, yeah, we're. just go, yeah, we're going to go on to this rate and the timer itself will take care of it, and they don't even have to think about it? As opposed to them having to, you know, voluntarily or think about, oh, my God, it's ten o'clock at night or eleven. It's time for me to recharge it and go down there and do it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the way many of the new vehicles today, and I, I speak, I speak from personal experience, new vehicles today, and I don't know how, how soon, how recently they started, but most of them have the ability to, on a regular basis, for example, if it's always at home, it, you can set it up fairly easily to always start charging at ten or eleven or midnight. Um, there's different ways to do it, but yes, you can basically, when you pull into your garage or your driveway or, or wherever you might have your residential charger set up. Um, just plug it in, jump out of the car, plug it in, and then it will automatically, if you haven't set up right, charge during the off-peak hours. So that's a, a capability built into just about all the new vehicles coming out today. I won't say all because I haven't checked every one of them, but the, the, the common ones. So yes, to answer your question, it's not our, it's built into the car, it's not built into our system. Now, the second thing that we, we mentioned before, you're going to see next year, uh, we talked about dashboards and apps. One of the things that we're going to do, um, which we'll talk about in a few months is um propose, what, you know, basically start working on more control for the customers. What's interesting about EVs is that, uh, well, I'll leave it at that. So that's, hopefully that's your question.
Yeah, that, that's really good. I just one follow-on question, and that's uh, if a customer had, let's say, a wall-mounted battery unit that they uh wanted to use to charge, and then that would give them the freedom to charge at any time, right?
Say that one more time, I missed the question.
Well, uh, there, you know, Tesla supplies, let's, for example, a wall-mounted unit.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Right? So, uh, why not, I mean, could they use that to actually, or sort of charge that so that it's basically ready so they could actually charge their car at any time with the freedom, as long as they had that charger? I mean, is it not inexpensive to have that battery, basically?
Yeah, we, we, I, I think part of the, you're, you're right. Um, part of the goal about putting this in place is there, you know, there aren't that many, we were trying to encourage more and more. And uh, the customers are going to be creative in terms of how they look at that. And so we want to learn along with them. But we really want to motivate them to get more EVs into our territory. But you're right, that's a possibility.
Um, Mr. Chair, just a quick question for Greg.
Yes, please.
Uh, this is, uh, it's, it's a great rate, and if, it's interesting to think, what, what if this was applied just to everybody? How it would change your, your profile and how it would kind of solve all our peak problems in one shot. I know that's untenable, but just food for thought.
No, no, we thought, yes.
You know, I, yeah. It would be nice to price the peak higher for everybody and figure out ways to do that over time. But the, the, the piece about this is people who own electric cars also have other things going on in their house. And what you're doing here is you're tripling what it's costing them to use electricity when they get home from work for other things, you know, from four to through dinner and eight, nine, with a central AC going, you just tripled their rates for all that other stuff. And uh, you can trickle charge a car overnight. I'm, I'm wondering if this, people are going to look at this and say, yeah, I can charge my car for very little, but all my other stuff is going to be so expensive, especially in that afternoon to evening, that I, it's on balance, like, I, I have a time use A2. I, I, I won't switch to this. I have an electric car and I have A2. I will not switch to this.
Uh, can I make a comment, Greg, before you answer? And, and uh, Mr. Talbot, just a, um, you know, we had a Tesla here and my, uh, my son, I had the Tesla, said that if you use the trickle charge on it, you get four miles per hour worth of.
You know, I know what, I know it very well. I've had an electric car for five years.
Okay, so you know that it's like nothing. I mean, four miles per hour, come on.
Right, but as, as a car, as an owner of one, it's, it's actually plenty for what you need overnight to get you through the next day and a charger at work. It's actually, we've only used the trickle charger and it's been fine for five years. So as an owner, I, I understand this very well. But even with the second level up at the three thousand watts, you can add ten miles an hour and you're going to get, you'll, you'll get eighty miles of range out of this overnight, each night. Um, and you have the car every day.
Yeah, let's not get into the, you know, statistics on cars, right? So, so I, but Dave makes a very valid point about this becomes a penalizing cost for peak hours for someone to, to adopt. Yeah, you nailed, Dave, I think you nailed it. Um, on.
Every once, once every fifteen meetings.
Right. If I may, Chairman.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just, if I, if I may just, um, Commissioner Talbot, you, you're exactly right. And what, uh, what we have been discussing um with the engineering and operations is there will be some customers that might be able to put their entire house and charger on one meter or one channel. We're, we're looking at, we're not looking at, but we have some AMI that has multiple channels, so there's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be great to meter, just meter the car charger.
Right. And so, so that's part of the, again, that's part of the mechanism to do that, that the car need to be its own meter potentially. Which has, which, which, so that's, there's, we're in a transition period with, with technology, but you're right. We want to set it, we want to make sure that we explain this clearly. But if we have it metered by itself, it's a no-brainer for, for a EV guy to, it's, it's a good, it's a good program if we can make sure it's separately metered, which we have a mechanism to do that.
I, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know, now, are you going to do a separate service? Are you going to do a separate meter? Like, if you say it's separately metered, it, it, there's, there's a whole litany of issues with the, that, that, I don't want to make everyone to make, oh, we'll just do the second meter. That, that's, that's a little miss, not misleading, but that, there's a lot more behind that statement than, than just throw a second meter in.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely correct. And so that's, um, there is, there is cost to put that second meter in. Um, and we, we do do that at, at certain residences already. Um, and, and that's part of, as you look at the rate schedule, um, two ninety-three, it is basically, it's got all the base customer charges, et cetera. Our intention, the way we structured it, is to allow the off-peak hour net-net to be less, to be as, as significantly as we can, less expensive on a KWH basis, once they're installed. And I'm with you a hundred percent. So we have, we have work to work out on this. But we, we want to, we want to get it started and, and get feedback from the customers and fine-tune it as we tune, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
That's the idea, at least.
You got to experiment.
Yep. Yep. That's good, good, good point. Any, any.
I'm good.
Yeah, so I, I, I just had one question. So Greg, you said you'd keep, you'd still keep A2, right?
Yes, sir.
A2, so A2 will keep, so, so, all right, so Dave can have his A2 and, right?
Yep. We, ultimately, we want, we, ultimately, but yes, we'll keep both of them for a while. We'll keep them as long, I mean, we have no, we have no plans to get rid of A2, but if the program works as well as we think, then the customers will, will be motivated to go to A3, but we have to fine-tune it. Yes.
All right.
So this is, so, so Greg, this would be like a, a pilot rate, if you wanted to call it that?
Uh, I, I wouldn't, yes, you, you could think about it as a pilot because it's, i- i- if, we're not going to have, you know, three thousand um, uh, people signed up forty initially. It, it's meant to be an additional incentive for those that are on the fence about buying an electric vehicle. It's another economic driver. So you can, you can think about it as a pilot, but we'll position it as a legitimate rate. It'll be a new, a new real rate.
Yeah, and you can, you could, you could fast charge your car at night.
No, absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, you know, it, it's, it takes time, you know, it, it definitely takes time. I, I, I was at um, Marketplace in Lynnfield, and I saw all the people sitting in electric cars, sitting there waiting till their cars could drive forward, you know, so, reality. Okay, um, at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Phil.
Um, a couple of points. I see, I, there were some raised hands. I assume those people want to talk. I see Dennis had his hand up. I know Marlena had it too. I mean, I would ask that you pay attention to that, please. Um, my question is on charging stations. Will this rate be applied to charging stations?
Do you want me to answer that one?
Yeah, please.
So this one is, is a residential rate only, and it'll only be for residential installations for this particular one. We'll have a different proposal for the public chargers later.
Good.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could ask Greg what the marketing plan is to tell people about it? Because I know when they get a new electric car, then they have communication with RMLD, and that is when you could do that. But what about existing electric car owners and also, you know, the A2 meter, a lot of people still seem to not know about that.
Yeah, so, um, we have a list of those that have the A2 meter, so they exist. So we have a, we have a list of those that have applied for um, a charger rebate. Um, I, I think we have a, I think our list is just a little bit over two hundred and fifty individuals, and I think the population is a little closer to three hundred, so we don't have them all. Um, but we definitely would do a marketing communications when we release it to let them know that this is going to come available. The other key piece is um outbound uh marketing communications um to uh the entire rate base. And then the other element, there are, in fact, you will, um, you will see them uh on Sunday, but there are a lot of the local dealers that are coming at our request to our, to our, our car show this Sunday. Um, so we'll basically let them know as well and communicate to the dealers as well. At the end of the day, the, the intention is to be as broad and consistent in the communication as we can. We won't do TV ads, we don't do print ads, but with the mechanisms that we have in place right now, um, through the billing, through our, uh, our email, um, constant contact piece, um, website, we'll be, we'll be fairly aggressive with this. Again, our goal really, as I said, as you noticed in the other one, is to drive as much customer awareness as we can. And we've got a, with our, you know, we've actually got Joyce on staff, um, that, who she's primary role is communication. So we'll be able to, we'll be able to, we'll be good at it. I won't say we'll be great, but we'll be good at it.
Last yes or no question. Are you, you're not losing money at eight cents a kilowatt hour overnight, right?
No, no, we're not. Um, we originally were toying around the idea with a nickel, but that would be, that would not, yeah, we're not losing money. No.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, no cross-subsidization going on there. Yeah, good question. Thanks.
De- Dennis, I, I, Phil pointed out, did you hand up?
Yeah, I guess, um, I'm going to ask Steve because he owns an looking at these rates. Someone has a long commute, they get home, and they do a lot of driving at night, too, maybe kids driving around, everything. Um, you, you'll have enough power in your car to make it through that entire night, not charged till ten o'clock at night on, for an average person, or someone that drives an electric car a lot.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're going to add fifty at this cheap rate, you're going to add maybe, to John's point, you're going to add about sixty miles of range a night. And think about it, you probably fill your car once a week. Sixty miles a day of charging is, is four hundred and twenty miles a week. So you're doing this every night, unlike how you gas up your car. That's, that's the cognitive thing that once you have an electric car, you realize, oh, I'm just doing this every night. I'm not going to the gas station every week anymore. So you're still getting four hundred miles of charging at the cheap rate, even a trickle charging. And you could put a level two at, at three thousand or six thousand watts and go much more, if you want to, um, and, and double up on that. I was just describing the trickle charge rate. Yeah, it's, it's good. It's a good rate.
Okay. And then, um, as we were discussing earlier, so this would affect someone that has a busy household that has a lot going on, that besides charging their car, their rates would go up um if they were, you know, doing a lot electrically at night.
Yeah, or they can keep the A2 rate like we already have, which is different, but also a time use rate.
Okay.
And that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Somebody else might choose this because it's better for them. So I don't mean to speak for Greg, but, you know, that's what, with this, and it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
It, it's a good rate. Some people, it'll, it'll work well.
Okay.
If, if, if you had a significant use on your car every day, and you, and you went to go plug it in, you, you, you're going to need to probably charge for four hours. And if you can get a um, a non-trickle charge for four hours, you can dramatically increase your range, right?
Oh, yeah. Exactly.
You know, let's just say you cruised around, you did sixty mi- sixty to eighty miles a day. Um, a third of your, your, you know, usually you go three hundred miles. So if you want to get your batteries up to, you know, eighty percent per night, you'd want to plug in for at least three hours at, at a full, try to, try to almost fully charge that car.
At a level two charger, you would do that. Yeah, you'd be fine with this amount of time. It's tons of time with a level two charger.
Yes, it's, yes. And, and you need that. You, you'd need that late rate in order to do that.
Yes, and you would like to have that. Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, so at this point. Jason, I'll hand it over to you.
Um, I did actually have one question, Greg. The um, A2 rate, it's like, once you go on it, you have to be on it for a minimum of a year. Um, if we can change, is that going to be expected of this rate as well?
Um, yes, that is the intention. Um, we might go back and review that, but that's, that's how we structured it originally.
Okay.
And that would, that would, in reality, if, if you do this, you would most likely want to do a separate service. And then, it depends on how much you drive. Um, payback's going to be pretty quick. I, I, I have an electric vehicle as well, and I charge. I, I do a little more driving. Um, this would be motivating to me.
Okay. So Jason, I'll, I'll hand it over to the Citizens Advisory Board.
Um, I think we've all had a chance to comment. Is there no further, if, if there's no further discussion, I'd take a motion. If we want to vote, is everybody ready to vote, or do we want to hold off? I guess this is the first question.
I'd be ready to vote.
I'm ready.
I'm, okay. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll obtain a motion.
Okay, um, motion, move that the Citizens Advisory Board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to establish a new residential time of use schedule A3 rate effective on billing on or after January first, two thousand twenty-two per the M D P U two nine three rate sheet.
Second.
Um, we'll call vote Vivek.
Vivek, Sony, I.
Dennis Kelly, I.
Jason Small, I, motion passes three zero.
If I could please ask you to read the motion?
There you go. Um, move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of Citizen Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to establish a time of use schedule A3 rate effective on billings on or after January first, two thousand twenty-two per the mass DPU two ninety-three rate sheet.
Second.
Mr. Stampa.
Mr. Pacino, I.
Talbot, I.
Beta, I.
Mr. Caldera, passes five zero. Excellent.
The biggie.
All right. Last topic. Yeah, go ahead.
No, please continue, Greg. Thank you.
Will do. Okay. Renewable choice, twenty twenty-two. So, um, we, we, we made a recommendation, not a formal motion recommendation, we made a uh, recommendation uh at the last meeting to have a renewable choice and a non-carbon choice. And uh, the feedback that we heard, uh, for simplicity, let's just have one program. Um, and the recommendation was one program called Renewable Choice. And then underneath it, the, the recommendation we heard was to have a couple of options in terms of levels. Um, so what we did based on that structure is we, we have drafted here the Renewable Choice. Um, the intention would be, and there's a, there's a lot of detail here, so I'll walk you through it, and then we should have some discussion. And then Commissioner Vida has, has some, has some notes from the Wellsley guys as well that we want to talk about. Um, so the intention, it, so very basic assumption in the upper right-hand corner, now this is twenty twenty-two, so we're basically getting things ready for twenty twenty-two. That's when we make it this effective. Um, remember from our annualized line, we're going to move twenty-three percent to twenty-six percent. And when we say twenty-six percent, we're going to retire twenty-six percent uh of our certificates. So all the rate payers will be participating next year, twenty twenty-two, at a twenty-six percent rate. Just keep that in the back of your mind. That's what that chart is in the upper right-hand corner. Um, and that's with the, that second bullet. Oops, wait a minute, sorry, let me go back. Forgive me. Um, so between, between twenty-six percent um and a hundred, we have a fifty, seventy-five, and obviously a hundred percent option. That's the proposal. Um, as we talked about before, the rate would be four cents per kilowatt hour, and we adjust that annually. And as you guys know, um, the rate, the, the pricing for certificates varies over time. Um, and as you also know, Um, and as you also know, right, they meant over a six month period. So there's a lot of there's a lot of variability in terms of what the actual numbers work out to be. So what the structure behind this is we would collect these funds. And we would put we would we would put these charges into a fund. Um, and then on a quarterly basis, we were we we were originally talking about doing just mass class one, but if this becomes much more popular, um, we would allow us basically to take the funds and retire the next most valuable one and the next most valuable underneath that. So basically, we're trying to provide some administrative um ability to actually implement this program by putting a fund in place and then retiring from the top down, from the most expensive down. So we'd start with mass class one. We'd make it available to all rate classes. Now, remember from our previous discussions that we're we're working on a green choice for the large industrials, right? Um, those are tied to some specific wind projects. So then any rate class can participate in this. The proposal that that we're recommending as staff is to have it opt in, have it a minimum of a year. Um, and so that's what's in the text there. And if you look at the lower left hand corner, this would be a twenty twenty two scenario for a typical residential um uh account, just like we talked about last uh period. Typical residential account is eight hundred and twenty kilowatt hours, which works out to be roughly about a hundred and twenty one dollars a month on average. So in this lower left hand corner, um, and again, assuming we put this in place for twenty twenty two, um, the renewable choices, there's three levels there, which are basically the hundred percent, seventy five and fifty. And obviously, a hundred percent, we would be adding an additional seventy four percent um at a four cents per kilowatt hour rate, which would add if somebody wanted to go full hundred percent, it would add twenty four dollars and twenty seven cents to their monthly bill of roughly a hundred and twenty one, which would be roughly a twenty percent increase. If somebody wanted to be at the seventy five percent level, they'd be adding fifty six to seventy five at four tenths of a cent. I mean, at four cents per kilowatt hour, that's sixteen dollars, which is a thirteen percent. You can see from the table. And if somebody wanted to participate but not too aggressively, they could do the fifty percent level, which would be seven dollars. You can see there, seven eighty seven, which is roughly a six and a half percent increase. So that's what it would look like. Um, the proposal that that we would recommend is is a structure like this um based on the feedback you gave us last time. Uh, it it is a it is a program that we could actually implement, um, and it's probably a program that we could communicate to customers. Um, so that's that's the recommendation. Um, you can see the summary on the right hand side. I'll I'll pause for a minute for questions um and discussion.
So Greg, can you explain where the twenty six percent is coming from again? So I'm clear on that.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, the twenty six percent is um. So what we are, what we did with policy thirty rev one is we basically said that in order um in order to meet so we we need to be, um, we need to adhere to the climate bill, which had a twenty percent target in twenty twenty, that basically twenty percent of our uh resources needed to be non carbon in twenty twenty. And then it also states that it needs to be fifty percent in twenty thirty. And as we as we talked about in the annual report, the only way that we can really claim non carbon in this particular case is to retire the certificates. So what we're basically sitting, so so that's the structure. And what we concluded um in order to avoid any rate shock for our rate base is to go from the twenty percent in twenty twenty to the fifty percent in twenty thirty on an annualized basis or basically three percent per year. So in twenty twenty one, we'll end up retiring twenty three percent. And then twenty twenty two, it'll be twenty six percent. And every year we'll increment another three percent. So by the time we get to twenty thirty, we're at a we're at a fifty percent non carbon um compliance level. And the reason why we did that annualized line is so that there would be no rate shock for the customer. It'd be a nice steady annual basis. So in twenty twenty two, which is what this snapshot is, that base annualized line is twenty six percent, which means we're gonna retire twenty six twenty six percent of our certificates, sell the balance, except for this, this would this would actually retire more if we do, if we put this in place. Um, and that's where the twenty six comes from. Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah, I got it. So um, I have a concern with the opt in uh to be honest with you, and I don't want to steal any thunder from Marlena, but um, you know, so I'll let her her discuss that first, but I have a concern with the opt in because, you know, right now we have time use. And I look at the chart that you showed me on I think it was slide six, and and that's an opt in from what I understand, and that's not very well lot, not a lot of people opt in. So um, I have some suggestions later on as to how to maybe tweak some of this. So I just want to, you know, state that upfront here. I don't want to steal any of Marlena's thunder though, so I'll see to her.
Mister Cheryl, just
Yes, please, yes, please, Marlena.
I don't have anything to contribute except that most recently, the Wellesley board um said and general manager said they're at ninety four percent participation rate for the program that was rolled out July first. Um, and these three pages that are included in the packet are one page marketing pieces that are really easy to read and have been distributed over the last, I guess, one to eight months. Um, that's it, Phil. I I you can contribute all that you want. Um, so it's it's a successful opt out program so far, but um um, you know, it's still new.
I know.
Okay. I I by that, I I I see your hand up.
Okay, yeah, I I had a question about how this has been communicated. Uh, I I I see a saying that, you know, if you're going from twenty six percent to fifty percent or twenty six percent to hundred percent. You're essentially each household is effectively getting a higher rate. Right? So rather than saying that the rate in rate is only or but you show the value or the increased cost per household in each of these categories was a different number. That would be an easier way. Monthly residential bill is twenty four bucks or sixteen bucks or seven eighty seven. And that that's an effective, you're assuming that there is a certain average number, average number of kilowatt hours. And so effectively, I'm just saying, if you communicated that this would be the effective rate, that's a very simple message.
Yeah, um, and and Vivek, the the thought when we use the average, um, since the majority of the bills that go to um, the customers is tied to kilowatt hours, and since the rate is tied to kilowatt hours, um, it'll it'll go up by the twenty percent or thirteen percent or six point five percent on average because it's tied directly to their usage. So
Yeah, so so no, because just seeing this proposed rate, that that's confusing for me here. If you just, if you didn't have that, I'm fine.
Well, that the proposed rate with uh the the proposed um, trying to try to answer the question, the the way we so you're you're right. So one way to do this is as we proposed here, this would be an an optional incremental additional cost that a customer can choose to add to their bill. And it'd be tied directly to their kilowatt hour. So it'd be pretty straightforward for them to think about, hey, my average rate's fifteen cents. Um, if I want to participate at the hundred percent level, it's gonna be nineteen cents, which will work out to be a twenty percent increase. What? So that's that's this is just so just to put things in a little bit of perspective, um, the Wellesley program, just as a as a comparison, they did a two things. One is they had a program similar to this, that the new program called We Care, which is the four almost between four and five dollars, uh, the one that they put in place right now that has the ninety five ninety four percent adoption. Um, that is basically a a four percent incremental add to each one of their bills. Um, and that and the opt in is basically that four percent. And the second thing is those dollars. Um, eighty five percent of those dollars are earmarked for uh projects like solar arrays um and more efficient equipment. Um, only fifteen percent of those dollars are focused on on retiring certificates. This program, and we can structure something like that if you want. Um, the idea behind this program is to have it focused exclusively on certificate retirement. That's where the retire more comes into play. That's all it will be used for. And then the second element to do is best we can. And again, we can work on the communication, but to allow customers to participate at a level that they feel comfortable with. Um, there's a whole bunch of the the Wellesley program is is good in what it's structured to do, but it's relatively small there. Um, again, it's it's less than four percent increase. Their average load per residential customer is about nine hundred and ninety kilowatt hours, almost a thousand kilowatt hours. So it's a little bit larger than ours um in terms of the average household consumption.
And as a Greg, I was just reacting to the information you shared on that screen right now.
Yeah, okay.
Reacting.
All right, yeah. We could, we could think about, we could think about a fixed charge as an alternative, but the thing about a fixed charge is that it's not, it it doesn't reflect, again, one of the things that we want to keep in mind at the very beginning of the presentation is to make sure that the charges that we put against our customers um are accounted for by, they're not doing any cross subsidization inadvertently. And so that's why we thought the structure here would be tied to kilowatt hours, because then everybody would basically be charged at a rate that's tied to what they actually use. That that's the intention behind a a dollar or, you know, a an amount per kilowatt hour as opposed to a fixed charge.
Can I, can I chime in?
Yes.
Uh, I just, I just want to add, so everybody can keep this straight. The ratcheted amount that Greg just explained, the plus three percent every year is a fixed charge that is already above and beyond the Okay, so we already essentially have a program. This is another program. The first program was we agreed to ratchet at three percent every year fixed. Nobody gets a choice in that. Nobody gets to opt out. It's fixed. And not everybody has that. Um, so it's in addition to that.
Yep.
Um, and as as Greg said, we can change it. We can, we can create any program that addresses what we're trying to achieve here, but it would be in addition to what we've already done.
Mister Chair, if I may. Yes, please, sir. Um, you know, I have uh said this in the past, I'm going to say it just one more time. I think putting the onus on customers to opt out uh is really unfair to many of our customers who are unaware of the the complexity of this. I think what's being proposed here is very fair to opt in for though the those uh customers who do appreciate uh the different choices that have been laid out. And they can make that choice, and I think it's totally appropriate. But I think to have everyone uh be included and then having to opt out is uh is just patently unfair.
And Mister Chair.
Um.
I I really
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I I think this is an excellent uh, an excellent program, a really, really nice job. Um, I think much simpler than the previous idea of two. Colleen made a great point that we already are committing to these three percent annual floors. That's a great goal. That's gonna be spread out. This is a great new program. There's only two things I would like to just, as we go forward, one is to assure that this isn't gonna be used to to hit those floors. We're we're doing those floors anyway, the twenty six, twenty nine, thirty two, blah, blah, blah. That's so you're nodding, which is all I need to say.
Incremental.
To it down the road that we could have a, you know, a buddy system, or what would it be? Sponsor your neighbor if if you want to, if somebody wanted to do this, but make it couldn't do it financially. Is there a way for people to volunteer to to cover this extra piece for people's bills? I I know you may not have an answer tonight, but this is something for the future. And then as we go forward and we see what the adoption rates are, you know, we keep in mind Marlena and and Phil indicated if if we see very low participation, um, maybe we could think about a small piece that's an that's an opt out in spite of what John said. Just to take a look at it, I I understand his concern. And we're not doing that tonight. And um, but I'm ready to vote on this. I think, nice job.
Mister Chair, I have a question for Greg. Did you hear back from any of the towns that you put up in last month's report for their opt in programs to see what their participation levels are?
I didn't, I didn't go out. So no, I didn't ask about the participation levels. What what I did focus on, one of the key questions you had asked before was um two of the towns, a Middleborough and Taunton, had a two cents. And what I uncovered is that they basically like that, collect that funds and that fund, and then they retire as many certificates as that fund allows, um, which was a little bit different program. But I didn't, I didn't ask about the opt in. I have not done that yet. No.
Okay, thanks.
Mister Chair.
Yes, please, Phil.
Yeah, so my my tweak that I was considering was on the lowest level there, the renewable uh choice of the fifty percent level. Um, I, you know, again, I would like to see maybe that level be an opt out. That was kind of my tweak. And then if people can opt in, so sort of kind of a hybrid method here between the two. You know, to to have that as an up up, you know, the lower level as an opt opt out. But the other two levels could be opt in on that. That was kind of the tweak I was thinking. Um, I understand Dave's point about seeing, um, you know, how this is rolled out and what the 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 people who take it on and, you know, see what the the acceptance level is. Um, you know, my question would be, you know, how long would, you know, how long would we need to take that? You know, in six months, can we come back and review this again? And could we re adopt at that point? Or or are we committed to a full year here at this point?
That's a good point, Phil. I I I think um I'm I'm more leaning towards an opt in personally, because I'm just looking at if if we're adding a one point four percent increase already um, starting January first, and if we added an point five, then uh, shoot me an opt out, you know, we're we're increasing people's rates by eight percent. And and I think we would all be fired if if we did, if we voted that in, I quite frankly, I think an eight percent increase in 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 one swoop, I think would be way too much personally. Um, so I I'm I'm I like the opt in I idea. Um, but um, you know, things change, right? I I I, we all have to understand that the way that we you know, you look, you look at your bill, you look at everything. I mean, just look at your TV bill, you know, everyone, we always paid just the one cable company, and now you've you're you 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 cut the cord, you're streaming, and everyone's doing everything differently. So you have to manage your bill differently. Healthcare is the same. You went from an, you know, HMO HSA accounts, now you're in an HSP healthcare spending accounts, but everything changes and electricity changes as well. So um, I think if we take more maybe conservative steps and and start with an opt in program. Uh, you know, it's see how it's how it's accepted. And then I think maybe you could make the the next leap. You know, as things change and we become more electrified and people become more aware, uh, maybe that's a a good point to maybe switch to an opt out program.
But how and how long do we have to wait, Mister Chair? This was the question. I don't think it's been answered yet.
Yeah, I I I I would
Observe the the process before we can change it.
I would almost defer to, I would, I would think at a minimum of a six, you know, you'd have to advertise, get customers. Um, that's that's several months. Uh, you know, if you started in August, maybe when the rate, you're you're advertising, so when the rate becomes available um in January, and then at least watch it for six months to maybe a year. Uh, I defer to Greg and Colleen, what they what they think, but
if I may.
Sorry, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, so this particular recommendation is an opt in, and I understand the opt out, we just talked about there's no option to the ratcheted uh that we're adding anyways. Next month, we're gonna be going over the rate changes for the regular classes, as that's why I stated that at the beginning. We have other changes that are coming. So I would suggest that we just think about this, you know, also think about that if we had a hybrid, which is, you know, some opt in, some opt out. We do have Wendy sitting here. We do have mechanics, the logistics, and how our whole billing system works, which we all have to keep and be mindful of. Um, I would suggest that we take more comments about anything else that you would like us to look at for programs. Like if we want to look at a Taunton one Like if we want to look at a Taunton one and maybe present that next month along with the rates, because I think we've gotten a lot done tonight, and then maybe look at the overall impact because I, you know, I, I, we, we all want to be green, but we want to be mindful of low income and people who are, are maybe not can afford some of these things. And so I, I just think we should pause then because this particular is an opt-in recommendation. So I don't want to change it to something I'm not recommending until I think we have more time.
Yeah, so just my last comment, Mr. Chair. I mean, we're talking about 26% potentially. Maybe we can look at, say, we move that, the opt-in could move that number up to, to 30%. The, the opt-out. Doesn't have to be the 6.5% that's showing on this. It could be some variation of that, some variation of the theme. And I, I do like the idea of some sort of hybrid, hybrid method here that Colleen has just talked about that she wants to go look at. So, and I would support her, her effort to, to do that.
Yeah, Colleen, so you're, so at this point, we're going to take this off the table per that suggestion? So you can go back at the billing system and, and see if a hybrid is possible?
No, I think based on the comments that we're hearing, that we could tweak it a little bit more and present some other options and some hybrids to this. You know, check and make sure that, you know, the mechanics and billing and stuff could actually work. And also re-present it with that, with the rest of the rates that we have to do next month. You know, we still have time again from when the budget goes in, but we want to make sure that everybody understands, okay, what would residential go up as a total? You know, it's already going to go up again next, next year by 3%, right? 3% every year, all the rates are going to go up. You know, we, we just and, and we want to be able to communicate it properly, especially to our commercial customers who would also be affected by this.
I, I, I mean, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with Colleen. I think if there's some additional questions that need to be raised or we need to see what the impact of some of these other alternatives are, I think we should take our time to try and answer the questions. And, you know, the, I have no objection to, you know, a hybrid approach. I just think, I agree with you, Bob. I think, you know, a, a very large increase is one against our, what our mission is in terms of, you know, being cost competitive with everyone else. But we have to play that off, obviously, in light of, you know, trying to do the right thing for the planet and everything. And I, I completely agree with that. But there are a number of people, it's easy to forget, who did lose their jobs in COVID and are coming back now. And hopefully they'll be back online within the next year, you know, if the Delta variant doesn't throw everything upside down yet again. So I think we just need to be very mindful of that and trying to convince someone of an opt-in versus an opt-out. I think it's going to be a marketing effort, no matter which way it goes. So I would, I would suggest that we do take our time and review this yet again.
Okay.
Um, could I just ask that Greg, do you have? Do you want any more clarification with comments? So we can make sure we can work on different concepts?
Nope, I, I think, I, I think I have input. I, I think your caution and, and Wendy and I have talked already, the, the implementation of a, of a hybrid system is not trivial to make it work both from a just pure billing perspective and then back to the comment that you gave us last time. Not make it too complicated. And I think as we've already shared, we already have a, it's not even an opt-out, it's a forced, you know, 20, 23, then 26, it's going to keep going up in terms of participation in this, in, in a, in a retirement, non-carbon, in a non-carbon program. So we, we'll do some analysis on it. I, I just, I want to, I want to set the stage that having a hybrid is not an easy thing to pull off from a communication perspective and from a implementation perspective, but we'll look at it. We will.
I, I, I think an important key is if you, if you need software modifications in order to support it, that'd be something in the billing system. I think that that would be.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, and, and, and that, that's part of it. And, and, you know, I, I think the internal stuff, the other element is the questions that come in, you know, we have a, we have a great customer service team. Communication is not going to be trivial on a, on an opt-in hybrid. Anyways, just, we'll digest. I don't need, I, I have some ideas and we'll come back. We'll, we'll, we'll try and figure out how to make it work. But I'm not, we'll, we'll work hard to make it work, but it, it might have some trade-offs. All I'm, all, all I have right now.
So, so at, at this point, I, Jason, I don't think we're going to have a motion on this. So we'll move on to the next item of scheduling. All right, uh, right now, the, the next RMLD board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 23rd. Are there any objections to that date?
It's fine with me, Mr. Chair.
I'm good with that. Good. Fine with me. Jason in the cab? Vivek and Dennis?
Works for me.
And 23 works for us, for me.
Yep, works for me.
Okay. Excellent. And the cab meeting is Mr. Stempak for coverage?
That's correct.
Okay, at, at 6:30. In October, will be Marlene, Marlena. All right. Okay, um, I had one procedural question. I, I, I guess maybe felt, Jason, I believe you would, you would adjourn first? And then we adjourn? Would that be correct?
Yes. Yes, just as far as cab scheduling, we do, I'm going to ask Kathleen to send an email to the board to solicit for October meetings because that would be the budget. I would have talked about tonight, but I don't think, without George here, I think it'd be better to do it discuss, without Kathleen putting out to an email to see what we have available. That makes sense to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I think that being the case, I guess I think we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, we'll call vote, Vivek.
Vivek, sunny eye.
Dennis?
Dennis Kelly, aye.
Jason Small, aye. Motion passes 3-0. We can adjourn.
Chair, moved that the board commissioners adjourned the regular session.
Second.
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Alba, aye.
Nina, aye.